Jackie Michael, Director of Human Resources.
I'm Dana Horn. I hope to be approved as your AVP for Super Bear Club.
Wonderful.
Jackie Michael, Director of Human Resources.
I'm Lisa Colaforn, Director of Talent Management.
Jayce Blackwell, Vice President of Leadership.
Morning, Kerry Phillips, Vice President of Global Leadership.
Adam Patterson, Director of Future Wars and Sciences.
Kathy Celesto, Senior Vice President of Operations.
Kelly Ewing-Millipari, Coordinator of Community Education.
Thanks, and thanks for such excellent attendance in the summer, hot week. Here's what we're going to do today. We have to establish a quorum which should happen any moment either with Candace's arrival or with Melody and Len joining or all of that. Once we have our quorum, we're going to go into executive session, but this actually will be a fairly brief executive session. We will be talking about the ongoing collective bargaining negotiations and a couple of litigation-oriented subjects. Then we will come back. Hi, Bill Ruder joining us. Then we will come back and take care of our action items, and we have some substantial ones today. But all of this must be completed by about 10:00 when we will lose two of our trustees who are traveling, some are traveling out of town or unavailable with graduations and so forth. Then to the extent other things are on the agenda, we will take care of them if we do lose our quorum by way of reports from the President, from the Board Chair. Good morning, Len Lannahan, how are you? Let's see if he... You are muted, but Kathy's helping you, I see.
I did. It's taken a little bit of power.
There you are. We hear you now, Len. Good morning, Melody Baker.
Good morning.
How are you, doctor?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. So we have given in our notices the location of the other trustees as co-locations of this board meeting. So I'll take a chair, the role now with Kerry being absent, and we'll see how we're doing. Melody Baker, Vice Chair.
President.
Here. Hi, Candace. Ken Crewley.
Here.
Len Lannahan, virtual, here. Len, yep. Amanda Lau. Candace Morrison, welcome Candace. Kerry Phillips is excused today, our secretary. Jeff Stone, here. Igor Sors Pinheiro, Student Trustee, here. And we are, we have a quorum present, so we will officially convene the meeting. And I will ask for a resolution to go immediately into what I believe will be a relatively brief executive session. We'll have some, the subjects will be again our collective bargaining situation with our units, and we will also have some litigation-related discussion. I don't necessarily think we'll take any official action in executive session, and we have to keep it on the short side because we need to complete our action items before 10:00 o'clock, okay? So with that, I'll take the motion to go into executive session, please. Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're into executive session, and we will invite you back as soon as we can, which should be...
Thank you.
The college area was attention back to we just had an executive session. No formal action was taken. We had discussion of a couple of real estate matters, pending litigation and personnel matters and collective bargaining without any formal action having been taken. And we're now back in public session. To start off, before we get to our other items, just take a motion, please, to following from our discussions here and in prior meetings that we will extend the term of the operating agreement authorized me to extend it with the chairman of the foundation for ECC through August 31st, the end of our two fiscal years, the foundations and ours. Motion? Thank you, Ken, second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We appreciate that. And we'll be working on that during the course of the summer to bring that to conclusion. The, I'd like to officially welcome our new student trustee. We did that a little bit earlier, but welcome here to the formal portion of the meeting. And we'll hear a little bit more about you after we get through our agenda items, okay? Because we have only about half an hour to do our actual business here that requires our quorum. So we'll start, please, on the action items with the approval of minutes from our April 24th meeting. Recall, we did not meet in May. They were distributed on page four of our materials. Motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Igor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes from April 24th are approved. Now we go to our budget audit and facilities chair, Ken Crewley, for four action items. We can vote on them all collectively after Ken and others touch on them. And we had a robust discussion at Budget about all of them.
The first item is just a continuation of a, an agreement we have with an architectural firm. We use this as the projects require and projects come up. And so it's not, it's, and the costs for it are built into our annual operating expenses. The second item is just a continuation of our driver ed program, which has existed here for many, many years and operates quite successfully. Third item is the fees for law enforcement training folks, also very similar to what we've done before. The, that's, there's nothing new with that. The fourth item is the main new item. It's a shuttle agreement with Niagara Falls Tour Company, which would be a change for us with the company providing inter-campus transportation facilities. And I don't know whether Dr. Sagai or, or James or someone else may want to do a quick presentation about what we're doing with that.
Sure, I'll, I'll take that. So this is as, as we all know, we've been getting a lot of feedback from our students about the experience with transportation. And so the college took that feedback from our students and went and did an RFP. We were very happy to get many vendors applied for that RFP based upon our student needs. We selected Niagara Falls Tour Company. And so we are asking the board to approve or to do a resolution for us and for me to enter an agreement with them. And this is time sensitive, and we want to make sure that our students have a schedule and know that we will have transportation for them. So we're excited about this opportunity. The college will continue to survey our students, making sure this is also an appropriate fit for our students. So this is really one of the main goals, is listening to our students and taking an action based upon that. Thank you.
I will add that this has been, from the board's perspective, a high priority for at least a year, maybe the year and a half by now, that we've reported on it every meeting, every budget meeting, we've looked at it. And Paul Daniel and James Blackwell, thank you for the work that you did in moving us forward, looking at a lot of alternatives, some of which may actually be viable for the future in terms of bringing this in-house. We don't know. I'm quite ready to do that yet. But this contract calls for $246,000 expenditure for the first year of the contract, which is actually $130,000 less than the expiring contract with Cedar Bus, which, and I think, based on what I've heard at Budget and read, that the approach taken by Niagara Falls in terms of driving the routes, figuring out the exact timing, how can we best make it convenient for the students, or responding to some of Cam's concerns that he's brought up at board meetings as a student trustee. This is a barrier that is on the easier side to remove if we can. And this is a big step toward making it easier for students to function in a three-location environment, even as one college. So very important, I think, and again, thank you to those who brought this forward. I'm very positive about this. Ken, any?
I have nothing to add. I'd move for the approval of the four items from the Budget Committee.
Second.
Second, Len, any discussion or questions on any of the items? If not, we'll take a vote on the approval of all four. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are unanimously approved. And again, thank you, especially with respect to item four. Curriculum, student success and diversity. Candace, two action items.
Yes, we have two action items. I'll ask Erickson to give us a brief recap of, of the first one. The second one will be a little bit more straightforward. It's just about making a change to the calendar. But Erickson?
Yes, great. Good morning. These are items that were discussed actually at our May meeting. The first is regarding a organization referred to as Guild. At a high level, they are a third-party sponsored contract provider that would be able to allow students that are currently working at a number of organizations, Tesla being one of them, that we've noted in this partnership, where then the company would then be able to have their employees come to SUNY Erie through the sponsored contract to have their tuition covered, to help them upskill in a variety of our various programs. And the second item, if there's no questions on there, is a small amendment to then our 2526 academic calendar so that our spring break aligns with our regional schools in terms of their academic calendar, specifically that the VPS and VOSI programs.
Just a quick on the calendar for fellow trustees, there's three dates that I always highlight on there. The spring, the fall convocation, which is late August, the spring convocation, early January, where the whole campus gets together, and then commencement, which is the May 20th, for those who like to plan ahead. I try to get them into my outlook. And if trustees can come to the convocations, it's a real good chance to mix with our faculty members and our staff members as well as students. So any questions? Or Candace, go ahead.
I'll just note that we did discuss these items at the May meeting, like Erickson said, so I'll move for approval.
Thank you. And second? Right? Igor, getting right in the mix. Good for you. Motion made in second to approve both items under item 2B. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved. Thank you, Candace. Carrie Phillips is not here for the resolution to extend our bridge financial plan for an additional year. However, Dr. Sagai is, has been central to these discussions. I've been involved as well. And Dr. Sagai, if you could report on the thinking behind this one-year extension, please?
Absolutely. Thank you again. Again, this was an initiative that the college put forward years ago. We've been building off on this in our new strategic plan with the idea that we want to build from our four foundational principles. And we have so many initiatives that the college has done. We want to be in-depth with our new strategic plan, making sure that it is applicable, and listening to our students, the college community, as well as the external community. And so we are asking for the board to extend that a year so that we can have even more robust data and really thoughtful of renewing our strategic plan to be extended four years, so we can do that good work and continue to do that good work.
When you look at the written material that came for this meeting, Dr. Sagai notes that the close alignment that we have with the four pillars prescribed by SUNY Chancellor John King are healthy, and the new plan will no doubt align with those as well, but the current one does. So it's not as if we're abandoning or losing momentum. We already have a bridge financial plan that's well-aligned with what the chancellor wants. And so, of course, there'll be refinement and sort of a longer-term view once we have a permanent plan. But I'm content living under the current strategic plan that we have. It served us well. We're making headway on a lot of fronts. So that's how I feel about it. Any questions on the extension or the proposed extension? If not, then I, a motion, please, to adopt the resolution as presented to extend the 2023-2025 bridge academic plan, strategic plan for an additional year through the end of August 2026. Motion? Thank you, Len, second?
Second.
All right, second, Ken? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, this was kind of the subject of robust discussion in committee, which is working, I think, well for us. Helps us move these meetings a little quicker. Talent, diversity, equity and belonging. Some interesting items in Amanda's agenda here.
Yeah, we have some, we have some good things on here. I will note that the human resource personnel agenda is going to be modified, so our, our motion will be as amended, just to reflect an update. But the first item that is on the list is the creation of the Association VP of Finance, Associate VP of Finance. And of course, that involves our good friend Arta, who's on the screen here, who we all rely on very heavily. And we really, really enjoy working with you. So thank you so much for all the things that you've been doing for the college. And I'm very excited to support this position being created. Audium, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add to that?
Certainly, I echo trustee Amanda that we are very excited about the opportunity. As you know, Arta has been with the college for a long time and did a lot of good work and helped us with our financial transition. And I'm excited. We're going to the legislature to present our budget this morning. So we're excited. And this is an opportunity for Arta to really continue to do the excellent work that she's been doing for the college.
So thank you, Arta. We really appreciate it. Another, another change we're having is for John, moving him from interim to permanent. John?
He's out of training this morning.
Well, thank you for getting trained, John. Really appreciate that. Very excited to have John on board. Our next item is the AVP of Student Affairs. Dana, hi, welcome. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Is there anything you'd like to share with the group about yourself or your background?
Sure. So my name is Dana Horn. I've met many of you. I am coming here from Cochise College, which is in southeast Arizona, where I was the vice president for student services. Prior to that, I was at the Inwashay Buffalo for 12 years as the assistant dean for student and academic affairs. And then prior to that, I was with a higher ed consulting firm downtown in Buffalo for two years. And then was in Iowa at Iowa State University doing learning communities and advising. And I won't go further back because it'll date me even further. But I'm happy to be here. I'm really glad to be back in Buffalo. I'm happy to serve the community that helped me raise my children. So.
We're glad to have you. That's an impressive background.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. Glad to have you and welcome to ECC.
Thank you.
Our next item is Associate Vice President of IRAP interim position. And this is where we're going to have the amendment. We're going to add in a leave of absence for Adam as in his current position, so he can take on the Associate Vice President. So that's the only amendment we have to add. But Adam, welcome, and please tell us a little bit about yourself.
So my name's Adam Page. I'm the Dean of Web Arts and Sciences at SUNY Erie. I've been in the position for about a year and a half. Prior to that, I was at the Higher Ed. I've been in higher ed for about 10 years, from adjunct on through. I've been teaching for a long time. One of the things that, I'm a lifelong native of Buffalo, so working at SUNY Erie is an joy and privilege. It's something that I really look forward to continuing my efforts here to strengthen the institution and to help raise.
Great, welcome. Thank you. Very excited. And then we have in our net, our new section for resignation position changes. You can see there that we've eliminated the marketing position. And then it brings us to Kathy. Oh, Kathy, we are so happy for you and sad for us. But this, this sheet in and of itself reminded me that, that your, your current title, your Senior Vice President of Operations Interim, doesn't capture everything that we know that you've done for the college. I started listing in my head. I'm like, oh, my gosh. Okay, so IRAP, you know, strategic plan, IT, work day. I'm sure many of you remember that Kathy and her team saved the college at least 20 million, maybe 40. South campus. I, I think everyone in this room could go around and.
Accreditation.
Yeah, and any, I mean, the amount of things that you've done for this college, like, we could be here all day. But we're, we're very excited that you're staying with us and returning to the teaching ranks. And we, you are an amazing teacher. The kids are so lucky to have you. Again, happy for you, sad for us.
We'll take a vote on these, but then we do, well, let's, let's take care of it right, right this minute.
Yeah.
Kathy, we, I don't know how to, for me, thank you. Kathy, it's just such a, such a bittersweet feeling. But thank you so much for everything you've done for your, for your, for your college. It's just, and you will still in the classroom. And who knows where we'll tap you in the future. But for now, just accept our sincere thanks for the many, many hard hours that you put in at that desk, counseling more than one president, trying to do your best to always find the right path forward. So we have a little gift for you to help you remember all those hard nights.
Thank you so much.
And some lovely flowers.
Thanks.
Okay. So that is our personnel agenda as amended. You can see on the, the link here of the FF ECC and AA ECC rank eventsments, right? Those are pursuant to contract. Unless anyone has any questions, I'm not going to go over those. And then, of course, what I, we'd like to call the Gail Resolution. We are very lucky to have Gail and that she forego, she fore, I can't even speak right now. I'm so excited that you're staying. We've got, we've entered into this resolution before. Gail could have taken the retirement incentive a few years ago. We're really happy that you didn't. But this is to extend it, to keep your options open. Please stay with us forever. But I will, I will, I will, I will support this resolution until the end of time. So thank you for everything, Gail.
Great report, Amanda. Thank you. So perfectly summed up. So we need to, yes, Len, go ahead.
Just a couple of quick comments. First, congratulations to Arta on her motion. Well deserved. Kathy, you have been just huge during a very difficult time and challenging times. You know, the issues that you took on were just, you know, compelling. They were difficult to resolve. Though, you know, I just want to extend it on behalf of myself, just sincere gratitude for your, for your contributions to the college. Congratulations on your new move. I know you're a tremendous teacher in the architectural field. But, you know, you, you deserve that. A very crucial time when, you know, when Arta was coming in and we had all these difficult issues with our work day. And so I just want to commend you. And also, again, I want to thank Gail. I'm glad she is still with us. Hope she never leaves. I always thought, let me commend her concept. Unable to retire. But I just wanted to make those comments. All three of these individuals have been very crucial to the development of our college, particularly during this era with Arta coming in and providing new leadership and needing the help that she needed to get us really off the ground and moving in a new direction. I really think, you know, we're all very optimistic about the future of the college. And, you know, all three of these individuals have, you know, played a crucial role. So I just wanted to congratulate all three.
Very well said.
Absolutely. Just me?
Yes, of course.
So again, I echo what was been said, and certainly Gail. Gail is not leaving because we're locking her down there. And as I mentioned, Arta's incredible in terms of some of the things that she has. But I, I really want to thank Kathy. I'm so forever grateful personally, all the evenings and late nights and Saturdays. Kathy, thank you for your dedication and commitment, not just for the college, just for the community in general. So thank you for everything that you have done. And I know it's been tough. It's been tough just knowing that. But I also know that you're going to be an incredible, you know, in the classroom, because that's where I met Kathy, was in the classroom. And I was just like, I should go major in architecture because of the way she was teaching our students and engaging. So thank you. And I'm forever grateful for your leadership and commitment to our college, to our community, and to everything that you have done for our college. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. And Arta, before we leave the subject, I just want to recall for the group that you have grown so much in the job, in the three or four, five years that I've been involved in, five years, I guess now, six. And just, just to see you take on such a professional load in the midst of COVID. I, I think we all would do well to remember that the first time we asked you to prepare a budget with, with collaborating with Bill was when there was absolutely nothing that you could count on or depend on. There was no, last year's template was utterly meaningless in the, in a COVID world where everyone went remote. It was the most impressive thing to have you just soldier through that, put together a budget that kept us functioning. And I, I just don't ever want to forget how well you did so early on in your career. And now you've just continued to, to grow. And it's wonderful to see you continue to advance.
Thank you. And I honestly couldn't have done it without the support.
Thank you. And I honestly couldn't have done it without the support of the board, Dr. Segai, Bill Ruder, even Jar Sager at SUNY. So many people, and the people at the college. Every single department has to contribute something towards making our college a successful institution for our students. The whole purpose is here to serve them. As a refugee myself, I think it's crucial to be able to financially support individuals, whether it's tuition fees or just living expenses. And to see the support that we are also receiving from SUNY and the Academy for all these initiatives, I couldn't even be prouder. I am so excited to see where our students go.
Thank you.
It's exciting.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Very good. Let's take a vote so that we are officially passing those items. As carefully outlined by Amanda, we have the three that were in the original resolution. We have the fourth item. We have the amended schedule as explained by Amanda and in our materials. So, a motion then to approve all of the items as discussed and presented today under item 2D, Talent Diversity Equity and Belonging. Motion? Thank you.
Second.
Igor. Second. Len? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the opposed. Congratulations to all who are the subject of these motions. Welcome aboard. And thank you, Kathy, again. While we're thanking people, Cam, glad you're at the table with us. We're going to miss you terribly as a student trustee.
I think I'm going to cry the most. I've already cried enough. But I have some cries and tears left for you.
Congratulations, first of all, on your award at graduation. It was wonderful to see you succeed in that way. And you've always been a thoughtful voice for the students at every meeting. You really worked hard to fight through. You had a tough class schedule, and you made it all the time to come to our meetings and express and gather information before the meetings. That was always impressive that you just came in well prepared. So, we've had a string of wonderful student trustees before you. I think it was Igor's brother, Marcel, and we had others before. It's a great string of tradition, and I'm glad we have a student who is a voting member of our, full voting member of our Board of Trustees. So, you can pass the baton officially, but we are just grateful to you. Cam, and we have a little token for you as well to help you remember all that non-credit time.
Thanks, bud. It was a pleasure. Of course. I'll meet you guys in a couple of weeks, actually.
All right.
So.
Very good.
So, I guess, do you guys want me to stay for the rest of the meeting?
Oh, you say really.
I was like, am I being kicked out? No, I'm not a member.
We're not going to show you around yet. Good. No, you're always welcome, of course. So, thanks again, Cam.
Thank you.
And thank you, Igor, for stepping up. And why don't you just tell us a quick, a little bit about your background? I know you're from Brazil originally.
Yeah, I came to study dental lab tech, worked for a year. I came back to the ECC. Now, I'm doing biotech. For the, for the time that I was doing lab tech, I was the President for South Campus. And as the biotech here, I was the president here. As soon as I heard that the position was open, I might as well just step up and do the difference here on ECC.
Look forward to getting to know you and working with you. And you're leaping right in. So, great. Gail, Audium, I believe that's the end of the action items. Is there anything that you believe we've overlooked?
All the action items have been approved.
Okay. In that case, I just want to let, I know Len and Melody are under some time constraints. You're welcome to stay attached as long as you care to or can. But we're going to move to informational items now.
And we're not back, though. It's exactly 10 o'clock, right?
You guys are so efficient.
Oh, let the record show, all right?
That's awesome, Jeff. Thank you.
All right.
Jeff, I just want to thank Cameron for his contributions to the board. He is an exciting young man who's got a great future. I know he's going to DeWol next year. But it's just been a pleasure, you know, working with you, Cameron. And we wish you all the best in the future. We just know you're going to be very successful at whatever you decide to do. But just wanted to thank you for your contributions to the board.
I thank you. I appreciate that, Len. Thank you so much. Like I said, it's truly I've been humbled and honored to serve on the board. Especially like when I first came to ECC, I never had intentions on being in student government. So, for my, for me to start here and then go here is truly like in ECC's blood. Like, you can start here and go anywhere. And truly...
That's a commercial, right?
I mean, it is. I failed my nursing exam into ECC's nursing program. But the, not, it wasn't that it was sad, but I ended up being accepted into a four-year. So, it opened the door for even a better nursing degree, you know? So, I thought that wasn't the end, but it wasn't, though. And just being, staying on the board and then staying with ECC just gave me a little bit more foresight. And I'm here now. Like I said, now, I'm looking for Secretary of Health, so I can tear down that healthcare system, you know? That's the next goal. So, yeah.
It'll be exciting to see, you know, your path forward.
I appreciate it.
We'll be there with you.
Thank you.
It's awesome. So...
Have a good day, everyone.
You too. Take a day.
All right. Thanks. Bye-bye. So, Cam?
Likewise. I just wanted to say summarily, Cam, it's been fantastic having you on the board, your leadership. Just thrilled to have you. Welcome to our new student representative. And Kathy, I don't know, but I can't really quite see you from here. You've been a tremendous asset. It's going to be very difficult to not have you on board, but we're so grateful for everything that you've done. Just tremendous. And that's it.
Yeah. Thanks, Mel.
Thank you, Melody.
Yeah. I'll set that, or we'll move, Cam, please, to informational items. Lead us through your agenda.
We can get through this fairly quickly. The supplier reports have been in the agenda package. I see nothing in there. I don't raise any questions. The budget, the actual reports, we have two of them. And everything continues to look good. Arta, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Not at this point. Not that what we didn't already cover in our committee meeting, but we do have a lot of entries still left for summer and year-end reconciliation. So, everything is going as expected at this point in time. We did, however, on June 12th, present the '25-'26 budget to the legislature through Dr. Segai. I think we handled it well. We were definitely transparent about the board and Dr. Segai being good fiscal stewards. We have reconciled the college. We've realigned programs. So many initiatives have been accomplished in such a short period of time. They did have a lot of questions for us, and I think we handled it with transparency as best as we, you know?
Thanks for mentioning that. That's important.
Also, Arta, the labor managed health, financials, everything seems to be doing okay there, too.
Yes, it is. We do do a year-end reconciliation come August 31st. And then, that kind of determines where we land on our financial dashboard. It is reflected. So, the fiscal year on the LMHF, it's a little bit different. It's a calendar year versus our academic year. So, there's some fluctuations, but it is as expected.
Thank you. The seventh item, the SUNY enacted budget, really don't need to go through that. It's been discussed. There is some small amount of additional state funding coming to the college. The amendment to the audit agreement services, any comment on that, Arta or Dr. Segai?
No, not on that.
Okay. And then, nine fees authorized for services, that's just the normal fees that we're paying for people who are on the faculty part-time of the law enforcement training program. The last two items are the minutes of our meetings for the last couple of months.
Yeah. And, Cam, I appreciate your leadership of that committee. Those monthly budget meetings are very helpful. Len and I always participate. Arta's there, Dr. Segai, and we cover a lot of ground quite thoroughly. And again, it makes it a little easier to do an informational report here because we've had quite a discussion of all of these items, such as the state budget. The only thing I'd add on the state budget is that the report that's in our materials characterized it as the third excellent year in a row for SUNY under the state budget. And I'm glad that we have our floor, that, you know, we of course have to build from that. We have that special program for people 25 to 55 going into selected fields. We'll be doing some internal work about that. I talked to Erickson about that before the meeting. And, you know, we're quite tuned in to the possibilities that, as Arta pointed out, it, for the last two or three years, have been coming from the state in terms of funding and help and programs and student retention. And all of these things tend to trigger needs at the college to staff something, to make sure that we're taking advantage of this funding that comes. But we at least have the funding, and that's a huge, huge plus. For the last three years, we've done well. And I'd like to, you know, obviously, as a board, publicly thank the governor, the legislative leaders in the Senate and Assembly in Albany who put this together, the State Budget Office, and of course, our local delegation, who has always been a very strong voice for education generally and for SUNY Erie in particular. So, very happy with the way the budget turned out. All set, Cam?
Yes.
All right. Candace, curriculum, student success and diversity, three informational items.
Yes. We have three informational items. I'll do the bottom one for as well Erickson comes up. Those are just the minutes from our November meeting. We met in November and didn't meet again until May. So, a long period of time. But two exciting items to talk about, Erickson, if you could fill us in. And they are available in the package as well. Take a look.
Yes. Both of these are informational items as they follow our boilerplate agreement as it relates to articulation agreements. Both of these are housed under our Automotive Technology Program. So, huge kudos to Professor Laverdy, who does just a tremendous job, as all of us know, in the community, to help bring awareness not only of the program, but also building pathways for students to be able then to complete the program in a timely manner. So, Vinnie was able to work with Dean Aiken as well as Adrian Rannick, and came up with two articulation agreements. One is with Lake Shore Central School District in regards to experiences that students are having while in the high school. And then, the other is a extension of our Adult Learner collaboration with Buffalo Public School and their CTE Adult Education Program, where students in that non-credit program are able then to articulate in experience as they then transition into SUNY Erie.
I just, I'd like to give a shout out to Vinnie because he is a treasure as well at ECC. And he runs a crown jewel program there, our Automotive Tech. And you go over there, and he'll walk you through. And he's the most enthusiastic ambassador for what he does and what that program does. And he's brought some great people around him, and the students love him. And the dealerships love dealing with him. He's just a great, great man to have as part of our organization. And I just hope that this can be spread further than Lake Shore. Is that a thought, that we can go to other school districts as well?
You had mentioned in regards to the SUNY Reconnect Program as it relates to the Adult Learner. And so, this is a great opportunity to look at that pathway of how do we support individuals over in the community to come here and be able to complete the degree in a timely manner. So, absolutely encourage those conversations.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erickson.
All set?
Yep, those were our two items.
Those are our two items, right, and the minutes. As far as marketing goes, I'll ask Dr. Segai to give us a bird's eye of where you see our marketing initiative going now, how it's performing. I have seen, you know, commercials. I've seen all the things that, the dollars that you talked about earlier are buying us. But go ahead, Dr. Segai. Your thoughts on the direction the college is taking on the marketing side?
Absolutely. Certainly, you're seeing us present everywhere in terms of just making sure that we're serving the region in the appropriate way. I just wanted to take the time to thank our marketing team. We have some tremendous staff within the marketing team that are really moving everything from an internal marketing to help with our registration efforts for new students as well as our continued students, communicating everything that we're doing at the college with our social media, as well as being present with, in terms of our new location, as well as our website. There's a lot of work that's being done by the college community led by the marketing team in terms of improving our website. So, more to come on that for the fall semester. I'm very excited about how we want to modify and reimagine our website for the fall semester. So, again, I want to officially thank you, the market team that we have, starting with Jerome, Matt, Amy, as well as Aaron and Courtney. Just a wonderful team of folks that we have. They're working closely with Eric and other leadership team at the college to really help us market the college and make sure that we're present in our community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, as far as policy and governance, we've had a couple of significant policies come out of that committee and be passed through the board in the last few months, one of which was naming rights. There was another one having to do with the academic readmission. I don't think there's anything new out of that committee, Dr. Segai?
No, not now.
Okay. Strategic planning and assessment. Obviously, we took a big step today there, extending our strategic plan bridge for one year. That committee is meeting quarterly, and we have their minutes there from the October 15. Carrie's not here to report, but Dr. Segai, anything beyond what we've done today on strategic planning?
No.
All right. Talent Diversity Equity and Belonging, Amanda, you've got transactions, reports, and minutes there informationally.
Yep, that's about it.
Pretty straightforward. And technology, Dr. Segai, what we're reading about the implementation of Workday, it's just the way that the whole team is working together is helpful. I've read it in the materials. Usually, in the minutes of the technology meeting, for those of you who haven't taken a look yet, page 106 has a good breakdown of exactly how the team is using the Huron dollars and availability, try to minimize that, bring more in-house and so forth. So, it's actually a pretty good read, that, those minutes. Dr. Segai, anything more on technology or Workday?
We can't let Kathy go without saying something. So, Kathy has to come in there and brief up there. And anything that I may have missed in the strategic plan, Kathy?
Sure. I don't really have anything to add to the strategic plan, but the Workday project has been along really well. I want to commend the team on student app work. IT has been, they're sort of like the silent partners of the college. They want to come back. But there's a strong team for the ERP side of the work that IT does, and they've been trying their hardest to bring most of the optimization work internally so that we can start to become self-sufficient. And while the college probably will always need a consultant because of the cutting-edge technology that Workday is, I'm happy to report that that team is able to handle most everything on their own with just a few hours of consult here and there on larger projects. And we are going to be going for, moving forward with the RFP for looking at the HCM side, which is the human resources side. So, you'll see that coming across your tables soon to help us get the most out of the product that we're paying for.
I just want to note, as we've been saying, Kathy has been involved in everything. But I have to point out, particularly in this area, part of our goal initiative as a leader for that team was to create and bring talent. And she has brought in some tremendous talent as well as promote within. So, I feel very confident, thank you, Kathy, that we have the staff both on the data side as well as on the IT side to continue to move that work that has been done. So, again, thank you. But that was her leadership to be very intentional about to bring and promote within as well to make sure that our IT infrastructure is stable. So, thank you.
And that comment, I think, leads to a bit of a shout out to Pat McNair. I mean, Pat has been in front of us reporting, and Kathy's relied on her team and Pat. And just such an unsung hero in terms of attacking the challenges on our IT platforms and really working with all the units in the college to bring everybody into conformance and have it work properly. So, just want to thank Pat, thank Pat publicly for that. All right. Thank you. As far as the chair report, I'll run through just in a few things that have been going on in the, in the period since our last meeting in late April. If you drove in today, you saw the sign at the corner, which is a nice feature. It always has a good message about ECC on it. I like it. It's being used well on marketing side. And you'll notice that we're creating our own little Ridge Stadium dirt piles out there for the athletic fields at North, which is great. Because we've talked a lot about that project, and there's been fits and starts and some frustrations over the months and years where that project was coming into birth. And it is happening. And we're going to be seeing that. We'll see about the timetable, weather dependent and so forth. But we are seeing activity out there, and that's going to be beautiful when that finishes up. And we have, as you recall, a $10 million commitment there, coming out of the county and the state to massively upgrade our athletic facilities for our students and for the community, and have it be here rather than our southwestern location where traditionally it's been focused. Each week, of course, and almost daily, I speak with Dr. Segai, and I value that. Each week, of course, and almost daily, I speak with Dr. Segai and I value that very much. That's been very, very helpful to both of us. Budget committee in April and May, I mentioned, you know, Ken's leadership there, it's really a very well-run committee and it keeps us so on track as a college and a good public sense of what's going on at the state level. And people like Ken and Len have spent decades dealing with the political environment that affects our finances, so it's great to have them on the committee and I really value that, that hour or hour and a half that we spend monthly there. New York State budget passed, that's good news. It was late, but it had a lot of good things for the community college, so I just want to note that and again, thank you to our public officials who brought that about. Lots of events and dinners at this time of year, so Dr. Segai is out on the trail a lot, other trustees, I'm out a lot. And all of us are taking the advantage to promote Erie Community College, SUNY Erie. The vibe we're getting, I, it's very consistent, like what you're doing, like the way the college is sort of turned around, feel the momentum, have a lot of confidence in what's happening. It's, it's a good gratifying feeling as we're out on the trail to see people, whether they be from our staff, our faculty, elected officials, just, just really rooting for our college and liking the way the Titanic is changing and steering. Very exciting for everyone. Igor, of course, glad to have you on board. Monthly meetings at the Raph Building, Dr. Segai and I and Leslie are typically the attendees there and again, very valuable, that regular communication. We get a lot of feedback from the county executive and his chief of staff and we give them information to help them have a better understanding of exactly what's happening. If they have questions, we answer it. Because they're asked about the college and they're a very important partner for us, obviously. So that, you know, whoever chairs this group going forward, years, whatever, that's, I would urge that as a regular part of the job. That's really important. Commencement, so happy, of course, our happiest day of the year, May 21st, almost all of you were there, Ken was honored. Dr. Segai shook every single hand.
Thank you again, Dr. Segai.
Well done. That's, that's impressive. And Mark Gallin from the foundation, a lot of elected officials, so we had a really nice turnout to, in support of our graduating students. Faculty was there and was, was recognized and they, they take great pride, of course, in that day. Working through the foundation situation, we'll, we'll be, have more on that at the end of August in terms of entering into a new operating agreement there to benefit the college and the foundation. I do believe that we will have some vacancies on our board filled soon. There's been progress there. Been working with Mo, who's the governor's representative in Western York, urging the governor to fill with the budget having been passed, the primary and so forth. And some names are, are out there and it'll, it's a process and sometimes a bit of a long birth process, but...
Are all the seats supposed to be elected by the governor?
The way it works for those online is there are, there are, there's a student trustee, the 10 seats total, student trustee and five are appointed by the governor and four by the county executive. So mostly our vacancies are governor vacancies right now. We have two, perhaps three. So I think it's two for the governor and one for the county executive, you know, if we have another resignation.
Do you think it will be a fair consideration for them to leave a seat for an alumni? I don't know if that's...
Not necessarily, although it's, you don't quite know what goes into a governor's decision. They try to put, obviously, you know, thoughtful people who have got experience in one way or another in the community and bring a diverse set of viewpoints to the table, you know, that's what we want. So more on that, but hopefully that at our August meeting, we may be joined by some colleagues, which would be great. I know Gail would appreciate it because she doesn't need to struggle with a quorum every, every month. Transportation, again, just a shout out to James and Paul. Really appreciate, you know, taking that and not just letting it drift for another year or whatever, but really figuring out some options, picking the one that's best right now and then staying engaged for whatever happens in the future. Appreciate it. It's going to really help our students. Adam and I attended the NAACP Gala on June 21st and I mentioned Mo from the governor's office, he was honored there, gave a wonderful speech and there was just a six or seven other excellent honorees. Crystal People Stokes was there, it was a tremendous room. So Dr. Segai, you're always out and about, you're always figuring out where you and I should be and others, you know, and that's really an important function to be so community-facing. And it was a great, great evening over at the convention center. And last but not least, I would like to take a personal moment and congratulate my nephew, Marcondes, who became a student in January here at ECC, having been born in Brazil and living now with my brother-in-law and sister-in-law. And he's a student here and he managed to get through all the red tape and paperwork to become a student visa person, started in January and got straight A's at SUNY Erie and he's just so excited and I told Igor, fellow Brazilian, so I'm going to put those two guys in touch so they can get to know each other. Fellow student, Marcondes, just a great young man and I'm very proud of him. So that's, that's my report. Let's see, I would then move to Igor. You introduced yourself before and probably haven't had too much time to do homework or report on student issues, but you're welcome to share your...
I've got a couple, I've got a couple things. So as the former student trustee, you know, and too, we didn't, we didn't have a chance to have a May board meeting, so my only last concerns I had as a trustee was being a student here the last semester, I had to chemistry and the seed campus chemistry just kind of seemed like it wasn't up to, you know, I mean, it had the, it had the standards of what it needed, it just, I guess, everything isn't updated, I guess, which you would find in the chemistry lab. So my only request is to make sure that the little chemistry lab, the only one gets the, the treatment it needs for the next semester, hopefully some better equipment and stuff like that.
Was it which campus?
Uh, City, City Campus.
At City, okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's pretty much it, like I said, other than that, that was pretty much just the students wanted to...
Any advice for Igor as he takes over for you?
I mean, Igor, I'll just tell you right now, man, this position is going to give you a run for your money. I definitely want you to understand, this is a position of leadership. A lot of people are going to look up to you, even if you don't notice it, a lot of people are going to be watching you. And definitely come to the board meeting prepared, obviously this is acceptable, but make sure you always have something to speak about, because you can't say that students don't have an issue. Not to say there's nothing wrong with an issue, but there's always something to address for students. Because we always can improve, no one's perfect. So that's all I say is just make sure you keep the students, so.
It's great advice.
Yeah, and we don't screen out any issues. We've had discussions of vending machines supplying at this table, you know, because it got brought up and that gets resolved, so. Thanks again, Ken.
It's been a pleasure.
Yes, and best of luck to you and stay in touch.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Segai. I really wish you were here right now, Dr. Segai, over there hiding down in City Campus.
That's right, so don't worry, I'll, I'll see you.
And it's good to see you too, Ina. Thank you, everyone, I appreciate this as well. I definitely have to head out, because I have to go downtown for the deal.
Oh, good luck, okay.
Thank you, everyone. It is truly been an honor.
Thank you for your leadership.
And I will look forward to seeing you guys all in my future career, hopefully.
Yeah, that side of the hospital.
Yeah, not that side. He's walking, he's, I know that guy.
I'd be happy if you were my nurse.
Take care, everyone, enjoy your weekend.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, thank you.
See you later, Bob.
All right. Colleen Quinn, I don't think is with us this morning online, I don't see her. I did, I had a good chance to talk with Colleen at graduation, sat on the stage with her for quite a while. And, you know, she's been very supportive of, obviously, the students. You remember how many times she's reported on how she gives a little extra credit for making sure that you have your paperwork in or making sure that you're registered for next fall when you want, have expressed that you want to be. And she really helps students follow through with that. That's good. And she, Colleen is moving from Southwestern to City and I talked to her about that and she said that at this stage of her life, that works well for her and she's looking forward to, you know, whatever challenges that brings. So I think she's in a good frame of mind and of course, she's a very fine leader in our senate. I believe, Colleen probably got re-elected if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Segai, or is that election coming up?
That is accurate, that is true, that is accurate.
She's like Gail, it's hard to, she, no one wants to have her leave that position, I don't think. So anyway, Colleen will hopefully be with us next meeting to update in person, but that's the latest that I had with her. And now, Dr. Segai, your report?
Sure, thank you. So a lot of the things, Jeff, just a couple of highlight ones. Again, graduation 2025 was just outstanding in terms of our students and being able, and I have to tell you, not only did I shake our students' hand, but I make sure every student smiled. And so some were bigger than others, but they all smiled, so it really is a celebration. But it's also a celebration for their family and the community, so very, very excited. And I want to thank everyone at the college, from our faculty to our staff, to our student ambassadors who participated and certainly Buff State who host us every year and thanking, thanking them for that. It wasn't as, as hot as the year before that, so it went really well. To, again, a couple of community things that we've been participating, certainly I've been part of that and in some cases, our staff have been out there in the community Juneteenth, the parade, I was able to be there with a lot of the community leaders of the, at the, in our region. We also had, you know, a president there from our enrollment team and others who were there, just really being very creative to engage students to come to SUNY Erie. We also participated in the Hispanic Breakfast, but again, this was at the convention center as well. We had a team of people representing. So one of the things I know Jeff and I and certainly our trustees believe that it's not just about us going into the community and being participating in these events, but it's also about making sure that our faculty and staff and certainly our students are part of that experience as well. So you'll hear us asking for more folks to participate as I think it's important, it's not just about experience, but to bring the entire college community. Summer Institute, unlocking our potential path to student success and institutional excellence. We had a wonderful turnout. I want to say to Lisa Powell, this was her first with the team, did a great job to make sure that our faculty and staff who participated, it was an all-day event that we were able to participate. So again, thank you for the college community for participating and continuing to really develop internally. Because again, we have to also continue to be a learning community and continue to make sure we're at our best for our students. One of the things that we are going to continue to do, we did one is community listening session, so led by James, that is one of the things that I will be doing with other folks at the college is to really go out to the community. In the past, we had the community come to the college. This time around, we will be going out to the community and listening to them about what they want at SUNY Erie and how SUNY Erie can really help. As we know, we have a very diverse community and we want to take advantage of that opportunity. So I'm looking forward to really do the community listening session in the summer semester. I want to spend a little time, Eric, if you don't mind, to talk about our Reconnect, the free tuition initiative and how our college is really embracing that. I know Jeff mentioned earlier, we are very grateful for the governor and all the political leaders who passed that legislative, that is an important piece for SUNY Erie and our team has been great in terms of being responsive to this. So I'll let Eric talk a little bit about some of the things that we're doing to ensure that we are giving our community, our community an opportunity with that new legislative bill.
Great, thank you, Dr. Segai. And yes, the SUNY Reconnect initiative is, I think, a huge milestone for the state. There are other states in the country as well that are investing in that adult learner population, really looking at a way to address some of the hiring shortages and be able to upscale these individuals into these high in-demand degree programs. So with the approval of the state budget in early May, it was announced on May 16th to the public, the SUNY Reconnect program, which is a program that is available statewide for the community colleges only at this time, for eligible students that are between 25 and 55 with no prior degree to be eligible for this program. And the program incentive is students must still apply for financial aid, New York State TAP required, fast forward preferred. Any aid that they get through Pell or New York State TAP, any difference is then covered by the SUNY Reconnect initiative. So students that may have lost financial aid or other circumstances are now still eligible for this program. With the announcement of it, we were fortunate to have, I would say, a very dynamic interdisciplinary, interdepartment team. Myself, as well as Chris Jones from the institutional research team has played an instrumental role in developing reports, as well as our registrar team and being able to give access to Clearinghouse, our enrollment management team, Phil, as well as everyone on admissions, taking in the number of inquiries that are coming in the moment that the announcement occurred, Justin Kiranen in the pathways area for the adult learner focus. We have a very diverse team that is here to support these students and the interest is robust. We have had many, many individuals each day over the weekend inquire about this program because it is life-changing. There are individuals out there that may have had financial challenges to be able then to obtain this educational opportunity that are coming to us and are asking about more information for not only the fall semester, but really moving in towards spring '26 and then likely into fall '26 as well. The main areas in kind of a broad level are the health sciences, so those allied health fields, engineering, technology and teaching. And so we've seen a very robust number of applications, not only for fall semester, but especially in the health and wellness promotion program, which is then designed to help with some of the prerequisites necessary to get into those health science programs. So at this time, we have a ongoing process where I'm working with those respective teams to identify eligible students that are here already, that were here in spring semester. We also are looking at students who are coming in that have applied for fall. And just yesterday, we also reached out to students who had stopped out since fall 2021 in those approved programs to let them know about this incentive. At that time, on a weekly basis, I take those eligible students, we go to Clearinghouse to look at them and verify no prior degree has been earned. Those reports are then vetted against our registration records and then those are disseminated on a weekly basis to the academic leadership, our financial aid team and student accounts team to be able to help those students to the next phase of helping with registration. So huge shout out to Adrian and all of our academic deans who are continuing to work with these students as well as those department chairs, helping them to get advised. Sarah Buehl on the student account side is able to help with students who had a prior balance, which may have prevented their registration. One other benefit of this program is students that are identified as eligible are able to have their registration hold lifted. They are not absolved of that prior balance, but are able to help them continue with their educational attainment, which is great. And certainly our financial aid team is ready and equipped that once all the financial aid information comes in from New York State TAP as well as Pell, any difference is then manually added to those students' accounts. So that's occurring on a regular basis. The response has been robust and we're always looking for feedback in terms of how to approve these reports and really I think we're in a nice spot to be able to then, for the inaugural year and the significant amount of interest in this program, we're in a really great spot to help support and continue to advocate and reach out to students that are interested in this program.
It's incredible win-win, the state, nationwide, the focus on this and for our enrollment, we're so perfectly situated to help with this. I feel like we're in a year where the program has been announced and you're getting quite a few people in, as you outlined. But I think this, the marketing dollars that we're spending, I hope we're taking a serious look at that and saying, how can we make sure that sufficient dollars in this budget are devoted to this? Because I just am worried that other people may be aggressively recruiting from the same group, you know, NCCC, others, or they're just simply people who hear about it, it goes out of their head and they miss the boat in the community. How can we keep this repeatedly in front of people as an option, using our resources?
And I know the marketing team has done a really great job of making sure that the awareness of Reconnect and SUNY Erie specifically has been in there. SUNY itself is also investing many dollars in outreach to each of the regions for the SUNY Reconnect. And I want to give a special shout out to Rose from our enrollment management team. She's also working with me very closely in managing the enrollment management email, which is our primary point of contact as a call to action to get these students to apply. And so we are working every day, all day, answering these inquiries that are coming in.
Huge opportunity. Dr. Segai, what, what do you think about the comment I made?
Absolutely. I think to Eric's point, number one, SUNY through the chancellor's effort has put a lot of resources for marketing at their level and certainly Eric and with our marketing team have been working out, working that and to make sure that we have that, including having a special section in our website to really dedicate for this effort. So we are doing a lot and we're seeing a lot of traffic to Eric's point, hence that's why we dedicated an email account to be able to respond. So we are certainly getting a huge inquiry. One of the things the college is doing though, because of the timing of this is really, and because it is a very specialized and advanced manufacturing as well as in healthcare, is for us to really upscale our academic... as well as in healthcare, is for us to really upscale our academic portfolio. And trustee Ken, I know this was a good challenge for us to really start looking at our academic portfolio. We have been, but this also really requires for us to really do a quicker respond to the, particularly to the health in terms of how do we upscale that, or how do we, you know, create different scheduling where we may not have capacity in the course offering that we have. And so we are certainly under Adrian's leadership, looking at a creative way to ensure that we have capacity, because capacity is the biggest thing in terms of the two area of this focus, advanced manufacturing and health, to do that. So a lot of good work is being done at the college and certainly responding. But I would say, from all the data that I've seen, speaking directly with Eric, we have a lot of inquiry and very excited about that and really making sure that we're gonna serve those students and get them into the program, into the college.
And thank you to Dr. Segai, too. Luanne has also been instrumental in reaching out to these students and helping us as well. So we appreciate the additional support, given the influx of interest we've seen here.
It's just such an opportunity, and it affects everything, because if we have health sciences and mechatronics, for example, that would be eligible, great, we're already set up, at least to some extent, in those areas and option quite well. But, you know, AI is another area. Do we have anything in that area that could qualify? And there's probably ten different categories that they've identified. How are we with each of those ten? Can we create something on the quick that responds to that?
Yeah, it's a great question. So the program itself does have to be a two-year degree program to qualify. Now, what's great, and I think SUNY's done a nice job in advocating for this, as well as our academic leadership, we've built micro credentials, certificates that stack into two-year degrees. And so the idea is that you can earn these credentials along the way towards that two-year degree attainment. When we look at the interest right now in those areas, information technology has been one that has received a lot of interest. And so I want to really appreciate, and Professor Donaldson's doing a remarkable job in working through these applications that are coming in for our information technology program.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Just two other important initiatives. We have a lot going at the college, but I really would like to highlight, one, especially this one, is close to my experience. As you know, I was an EOP student at the college, at SUNY Erie, and EOP has an extraordinary benefit for a student to be able to go through that program. So one of the things that we did, SUNY is piloting, and I'm gonna ask Adam to come up to talk about an EOP research project that SUNY Erie is part of a pilot in SUNY, which is an exciting opportunity to think about research at a two-year. Typically, that is not something we always think about, that we do research or have students be exposed to research at a two-year, but this is one of the initiatives. And then alongside with that, while you're there, Adam, I also want you to touch on our ASAP. That's another initiative that we got from SUNY that our college is really working on, and both of those areas are being managed by Adam. So if you could speak to that research EOP, I would appreciate that.
Certainly. So for the EOP research opportunity, we are partnering with about four or five other four-year schools. So we are one of the only two-year schools involved. What it allows us to do is we have identified twelve EOP students that have high standings and are interested in developing research skills within liberal arts and sciences. So what SUNY is doing is that it's offering a stipend to the students to go through a six-week course, partnering with the other colleges such as Purchase, Albany, Binghamton, I'm forgetting the fourth off the top of my head. They are all working through STEM, and we are focusing on liberal arts and sciences. So we right now have a program where they're coming in Monday, Wednesday, Friday for approximately six to seven hours, and then they are doing independent research on Tuesday and Thursday to really develop that skills. And at the end of it, once they have completed all of their research, they will be going to Albany to present in front of the chancellor, to talk about their experience, as well as one of the topics that they are directly researching.
And this involves our faculty? Adam, maybe talk about the two faculty that are leaving this?
So we have, we have two faculty members. We have Dr. Nicole Devilliers and Dr. Danielle Piver. They are both social scientists, have a lot of experience within the liberal arts side of research. So they're helping the students focus on and develop the, both the research skills from a, not just from a liberal arts discipline, but their information literacy, utilization of technology, as well as being able to navigate research systems within the social science arena. So that's, it's a very exciting program. We've had a lot of good feedback from the students. They're very excited for it. And if it continues on, this is something that will be very beneficial for the students at large.
So one of the things that we're committed, and certainly committed, is that any opportunity for a pilot for our college to participate, we're raising our hand. And I think this gives our students, particularly in the liberal arts, as you all know, a majority of our students are in the liberal arts. So this is a great opportunity for our students to really get involved in a project like this. And I believe we have about twelve students, Adam?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so twelve students are part of this pilot project, and so I'm very excited about that. And Adam, if you could touch a little bit on our ASAP program?
Certainly. So ASAP is still going very strong. This is a program that was started in the fall of twenty-four. It's based off of a CUNY model for retention and persistence. And one of the things that we've done is it has a dedicated advisor with an intrusive advising model. So this is somebody that calls at least once a month to each student within the program. It's about developing relationships and building a mentor-type model. So this is something that SUNY has been trying to transpose to the different colleges in the area that have signed up for it. We have a very strong program. We have a, right now, eighty-five percent retention with currently, out of those eighty-five percent that have continued on, a hundred percent of them are currently enrolled, I believe, as of today. So it's a model that seems to be very helpful, because these are students within general studies. So general studies is the largest program in the college with approximately fourteen hundred students in spring of twenty-five, and it's one of those areas that we see the largest attrition from. So utilizing this to help them define and find a program and define and find a path in their life, so that they can move out of general studies and into either a degree or be set up for a good transfer to a four-year. So that's where we work with our partners, because ASAP is the community college level. ACE is, or Trace, is the four-year level. So we work with Buff State, and we work with UB and their programs, so that the students can continue on seamlessly between the different colleges and programs. So just a little background on it, this is a grant that is for gap coverage. So once students have applied for Pell and TAP, it will cover that in addition to childcare and a monthly stipend for students for travel, as well as just living expenses.
Thank you so much, Adam. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That ends my report. Thank you.
It's an unusual meeting where we have gone this long. Thanks, Adam. Well into the meeting without even mentioning the South Campus move. But Dr. Segai, why don't you let us know your very latest on Cobham? What's happening over there and what the plan is for the next couple of months?
Absolutely. So in general, facility, we have a lot of remodeling projects. And so first, I want to thank the college community for really being inconvenient. And I think that's part of what we have to do to get the college up to date. We want to make sure that our students and their family have the best experience, as you heard from trustee Ken, about the updating of our chemistry. Our goal is to ensure that we have consistency across our locations. And part of that is really investing in that location, the physical space in which we do instruction, and the experience of our students matter. And so with that being said, we have projects happening at the city campuses, you know, at our atrium that is moving in the right direction. We have projects at North Campus that is also moving in the right direction, including the field for our sport. And then our location at the South Campus. Again, I just want to remind all of us that we are still present at our current location. We will have programs offering in the fall of twenty twenty-five at our current location. We will perhaps be located in one building versus the other buildings that we have, just to make sure that the experience of our students and the faculty and staff at our current location will get all the necessary support. With that being said, our new location is also going to be fully functioning. We are just working to ensure that our furniture, the new furniture arrive at our new location before we have a grand opening. And so as soon as we get close to that date, the college community will make an announcement to do a grand opening, as well as host our new student orientation at our new location. And so we are working through to make sure that things are placed. We have opened the opportunity for the college community to take tours. So James and Rich and the entire facility team have been incredible. I can't thank enough our facility team for really being flexible and ensuring that every part of the college is up to par, including the space that I'm in right now. This is a conference room at the City Sports Center. It has not been updated, but today, I asked for that to happen a month ago, and I come today, things are updated, at least to a certain level. More to come. But certainly, they have been responsive to make sure, to make sure that the experience of our students and our faculty staff is up to par. We deserve to be in a space that is up to date and up to par to make sure that the experience is optimal. So more to come on our new location as we get closer.
And we do anticipate a grand opening ribbon-cutting type event, hopefully everyone can enjoy that. That will happen once the furniture gets installed. We coordinate that with the county executive's office. So that should be a red-letter day for the college in perhaps August.
Very excited about the opportunity.
Yep. All right. Thank you, Dr. Segai. Comes to old business. We've covered a lot of variant business. Any additional matters of old business to bring up? Okay? Any new business? All right. Again, just welcome to our newcomers, and thank you, everyone. It's just such a great team that is functioning around Dr. Segai here to just advance things, and it's really showing. Our next meeting will be August twenty eighth, and we'll be doing it here. I've spoken with Gail and Dr. Segai, and in the new year, starting in September, we'll be rotating a bit. For example, we will go down to City, where we met in the past. We will go to Cobham, and probably the September meeting will be at Cobham, so that we all become completely familiar. In the meantime, of course, anyone here, and certainly trustees, are welcome and encouraged to go over to Cobham, knock on the door, work through Dr. Segai. And they are thrilled to give tours, and it's just impressive. It's really great. And of course, I'd like to go over to Northland as well, so that we're all sitting at Northland and really observing the action going on over there. All of us have gone there for the various ceremonies, for the auto tech advancement, the mechatronics, tours with the chancellor, and so forth. But just have a board meeting over there and, you know, make sure that the board is present in all of our locations is a goal for the coming year. Okay?
Thank you.
That is all I have. If no one has anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn, please. All right. Thank you, Igor. Second?
I'm second.
All right. Thanks, Candace. All the favor.
Bye.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Bye, everyone.